We will now call the July 12, 2022 Town Council Meeting to order. Rafina, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are skipping our first presentation. Our Eagle Scout is not with us this evening. Are we postponing that to another date? Do we know?
Yes, I think we will put it on the next one.
Okay, we'll do that at our next meeting. So we'll move right to item C2. And Kathy, I believe you have some remarks.
Yep, and I can't see the audience, but I'm sure Chief Ryan is in the audience. And maybe you can come up to the podium and like to introduce Colin Ryan. And he was appointed Chief of Police a couple of, a week ago, I think. So Cap, Chief Ryan has served his entire career with the town of Farmington. And he exemplifies the strength, dedication, and commitment to our police force. Chief Ryan is highly qualified and well-respected through the state of Connecticut, the town of Farmington, and the Farmington Police Department. The town of Farmington has an outstanding police department, and I'm confident Chief Ryan will lead the department with integrity and continue the department's reputation of delivering the highest level of professional police services in the partnership with the community. I've worked with Chief Ryan for the past 23 years, and I look forward to working with him in his new role and as a member of my senior management team. And I just asked Chief to come to the meeting tonight to say hello and just maybe just say very few words to the council.
Of course. Thank you, Kathy. Colin Ryan, 23-year veteran of the Farmington Police Department. Recently, the last five years, I was the captain at the police department, second-in-command. I'm excited about this new role. Looking forward to, you know, guiding the troops into the, into the future. We have a great department. Very split right now, about, you know, half of the people are probably, you know, 12 years and under on service, and then the other half are 12 years plus. So it's a really good mix, and I'm excited about the opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Colin. And we're, we feel very fortunate that you accepted the position, and we've got someone with such great credentials. I mean, 23 years on Farmington Police Force. I like the fact that Kathy introduced you. You could just say, man, there needs no introduction because you've been around, and we've seen you as captain and before that working your way up. So we really appreciate it, and we thank you for taking this position.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So next, we have Tom Fitzgerald. And Tom, I think you're in the audience too. And Tom has been hired as our new Director of Fire and Rescue Services. Tom has 23 years' experience in the New Haven Fire Department, beginning as a firefighter and working up to the rank of captain. Additionally, Tom has served as a Commissioner of the Newtown Volunteer Fire Department for the past three years. Tom has been a working part-time for us for the last month, shadowing a former Chief Malamson and getting to know some people, and started full-time, I think, last week. So, welcome, Tom, and this is our Farmington Town Council, and maybe you could just say a few words.
Well, thank you, Kathy. Yep, as Kathy stated, my name is Tom Fitzgerald. I was a captain in the New Haven Fire Department. My last two years, I was an active battalion chief. I'm very excited to be starting this new position in the town of Farmington. The fire department here has a tremendous reputation throughout the state, and Chief Malamson did an excellent job of handling them for the past six months. And prior to that, I know Steve Hoffman did a great job as well. I'm looking forward to working with you and Kathy and Colin as well. And it's gonna be an exciting time, and I'm very, very much looking forward to the opportunity. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Tom, and welcome. I guess 23 is the number, so I'm just wondering, Kathy, were you playing 23 in the Lotto? It's a good number for tonight. We're really happy and pleased to have someone with such great experience coming to Farmington and helping guide us, the Fire and Rescue Services going forward. And the important question is, did you get a chance to go to the Fire Carnival this weekend?
I went on Friday afternoon. I was not able to attend it because I had a childcare issue with my wife. So I am actually, I told her next year, we're gonna go as a family for fireworks night.
Great. Fun night. Fun few days.
Yes.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, next, moving on to item D, public hearing of which we have none. Item E, no new items. We will now go to item F, public comment. We will begin with those here in the audience. If they would like to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes. And then we would go to anyone online. So is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak today? Seeing none. Kat, is there anyone online?
Yes, the first one is Tim Kelly.
Tim, can you hear us? Tim, you're on. Or not? Can you see him to be there, Kat?
He is there. I asked him to unmute.
We still can't hear you, Tim.
He's unmuted, but we still can't hear him.
You're unmuted, and we can't hear you. Going once. Going twice. All right. Sorry, Tim. Technical difficulties, I guess. Okay, we'll move on to item G. Wait.
Anybody else?
No other hands are up.
Item G, Joseph.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 7, 2022 regular Town Council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the June 21, 2022 regular Town Council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item H, reading of communications and written appeals. Anything, Kat?
Nope, I do not see anything included.
Okay. Item I, report of committees, 1928 Building Committee.
Yes, so we met this afternoon. At the last meeting, I told you we sent out our RFQ, and during that time, we received four submissions. Today, the committee met in executive session. We came up with a shortlist, and we're gonna invite three of the four to come to our next meeting in June 26, 2022 at 4:30 here in the Town Council chambers, where they're gonna be interviewed by us. This process will be open to the public. You can attend here in person or via Zoom. You will not be able to ask questions to the architects, but there will be opportunities of public comment.
Great. Thank you. Farmington High School Building Committee.
So, we met last Wednesday. We're, we went over a finalized BE list. Construction documents for the high school have been completed. Two independent reviews have been done for estimates. There was a little bit of an over-budget. We worked through that in the BE list, and then also separated out the tennis courts in separate bid package. Our next meeting is July 20, 2022 at 5:00 PM.
Great. Thank you. Green Efforts Committee.
Our meeting is currently being held, so I could not attend. We did not meet last month, and our next meeting is September 6 at 7 o'clock.
Okay. Land Acquisition.
Only thing to report, that the land purchase has been completed, and that is it.
Great. Thank you. Racial Equality Task Force.
Yes, the task force participated in the Juneteenth event in the Hill, the Hillstone Museum on the 25th of June. We had beautiful weather and a great turnout. Members of the task force had the opportunity to meet with hundreds of community members, spread awareness of the group's goals and objectives. Our next meeting will be July 25, 6:30 over Zoom.
Great. Thank you. Report of the Chair and Liaisons. That would be me. We just welcomed our new chief and the Fire and Rescue Director tonight, so I think we're all happy to have them on board. And again, we congratulate you once more time, and thank you for your help going forward. As mentioned briefly, the Tungstus Carnival was a big success. Spoke with some of the folks on Tungstus. They said, great attendance. They did very well this year. So thank you for everyone who showed up to that. Also, we've got our concert, Summer Concert Series ongoing. That's Thursday night, 6:30 to 8:30 on the hill right behind us, I believe, still, on the F-Hill. That will be Thursday night, and Locomotion is playing this week. So go on out and support them. For all you Francophiles out there, Avert Brasserie is having a Bastille Day Festival on July 14. That'll be at Sub Edge Farms, so you can contact either Sub Edge Farm or Explore Farmington for details. Tonight, Bridge Healing Arts Center is having their first meeting of the Happier Center. So if you want laughs, arts, and yoga, and you are going anywhere but right here, why, I can't imagine, you can go over and visit with them. They're there till 8:30. At the library, just a little side note, they have what they call the Library of Things, so you can take out bocce, cornhole, ladder toss, all kinds of other things. So it's not just books at the library. I do want to remind everyone with the warmer weather, please be diligent to carry out whatever you carry in. We've got trash receptacles at all the parks. You can find them. If you can carry it in, just put it in a bag and carry it out. You know, just bring a bag with when you go there. If you see something someone else inadvertently left behind, just grab it and pick it up. It's much nicer when we're going out there, and everything is very clean. I've seen everything from going out and having horrendous trash, from diapers and bottles to very clean, and people picking up after them. So be one of the people picking up after them. And that is all I've got for my chair report. We will now move on to Conservation and Inland Wetlands.
So Conservation and Inland Wetlands had a meeting on July 6. They had a number of new business items. They unanimously approved a revised proposal for lots 40 and 40B1, Farmington Avenue, which is 8231 and 9249 Farmington Avenue, if anybody's interested in that minor detail, finding that the proposed activities will not result in any adverse impact upon the wetlands or water course. Among the other things they did, they accepted an application for a sidewalk to replace an existing sidewalk and install a covered walkway at 100 to 110 Hyde Road, and also for, in addition to a home, in-ground pool and detached garage at 9 Apple Tree Lane. They also voted to approve the carriers, carrier group's application for a 25 cluster subdivision at Maraya Road with certain conditions. The Conservation Commission did not have any new business.
Great. Thank you. Board of Education.
Nothing new to report, because I hope all the teachers are off having a good time for the summer.
Hopefully so. Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. There was a grant we spoke about last time, AARP, which will be working to help put some bike racks, and some, I think we're gonna get a water fountain in sometime soon on one of the trails, and also our signage. Economic Development Commission Liaison, no report. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Very grateful that we have a number of citizens and businesses in the Historic District that are coming to the commission to make sure that what they want to do on their properties is within the commission's and keeping our Historic District looking pristine. It was approved to add new gutters and replace windows at 18 Mountain Road on a detached garage. There's also voted to install a split-rail fence at 141 Main Street. Also voted that we would install two air-conditioner units at 24 Mountain Road. And we also voted that to continue a public hearing on a screen door for a business in the village. So very grateful to all those people who came to the commission. I hope everyone will, so we can keep our Historic District looking beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
Human Relations Commission. Is that it?
That's me.
Oh, sorry.
So the Human Relations Commission will meet on July 25. Two people from the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities will be there to talk about what they do. That's the state-level HRC equivalent, and also discuss future collaboration with the HRC, our HRC. They're planning, they're in the process of planning an event for voter registration week in September.
Great. Thank you. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
Other than the Library of Things.
Library of Things. Big, yes, sorry. Apologies.
TPZ.
Also, nothing to report. Not a lot going on right now. I was told there's a bigger meeting expected, their next meeting, which is the last one of the summer, July 25.
Unionville Historic and Unionville Village, we will bypass this evening. WPCA.
Meetings tomorrow night at 7 o'clock.
Okay. Any other liaisons or reports that we have to add? Seeing none. Okay, moving on to item K, Report of the Town Manager.
You mentioned the ARPA grant. I just wanted to mention that we did receive the ARPA grant, and it was for $19,107. And that was for wafer fare, signage, bike rack, and age-friendly benches. The other thing I wanted to report on is that the town is going to be applying for a steep grant, and the steep grant is going to be for pickleball courts and a splash park over at the Stonehouse area at the Westwoods Golf Course. So that was one of the items that we thought would be good to apply for, and so we are applying for the pickleball courts and the splash park in the next round of steep grants.
From the same site, the pickleball and the splash park?
We would, yes, yes. We're thinking that they'd be.
Like a water pickleball.
Not a water pickleball, but, so cross your fingers, so we'll see what happens.
Great. Thank you. And the age-friendly, because that caught my attention the first time. It's an AARP grant, so it's age-friendly for people who could use assistance standing up, I think. It's not for little kids. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the town manager's report.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Appointments. I believe we have a few.
Yes. Call me.
All you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to nominate or put forward Lakeisha Brown for the Human Relations Commission.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Should I say a little something about Lakeisha?
If you'd like to, yes.
Yes, I'd like to. Lakeisha has been a town resident for the past eight years. She works as the head of Human Resources at Yukon Health, and has law, has had a long career in human resources management. She's an advocate for diversity, equity, and inclusion matters, both professionally and personally. She's helped to form and then led the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Club, IDEA+ at Noah Wallace School, and she's been involved in several other town initiatives and volunteers for the Girl Scouts of America. She has two daughters in Farmington, one of whom has an autism diagnosis. They've both worked very hard to be examples to others of what is possible for the neurodiverse population. And I think her personal experiences and her professional skill set would be of tremendous value to the HRC.
Great. Thank you. Did we just, okay, that's settled. Lakeisha's good. Next.
Matthew Bandle for the Town Planning and Zoning Commission.
Can you go down the list? We'll go, if you can do the Plainville first.
Sure.
Go through the numbers. Thank you.
Okay, so which one is it?
Plainvalory Cable, L6 and L7, I believe.
Right, so both of those are reappointments. I'd like to reappoint Mrs., Ms. Bagdigian Butero and Ms. Liz Gionaros for the Plainville area.
One at a time.
Okay, let's go.
Getting technical.
Sorry, Mrs. Ms. Bagdigian Butero for the Plainville area Cable TV Advisory Council.
Second. Thank you. Any comments on her?
No, I mean, she's well-known. She's a.
Been there for a number of years. Yes. Emily's, the family has a name, a road named after them, so, you know. Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd also like to reappoint Liz Gionaros to, again, the Plainville area Cable TV Advisory Council.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any comments there?
No.
Her son isn't here to vote for her, but other than that.
He skipped.
I don't know.
He's actually.
I'm not gonna say that. I'm not feeling well tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Next.
Matthew Bandle for the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe it's an alternate position.
Yes. Second. We have a motion and a second. Comments?
Yes, please. Matt is a United States Marine Corps veteran and has been a resident of Farmington for 15 years. He works as a director at a site acquisition company focused on telecom and solar development. For over a decade in his professional role, he has been involved with zoning and development, so he brings regulation knowledge as well as a keen understanding of what it means to be an applicant. Matthew's professional experience would allow him to start off well-prepared for the role of TPZ Commissioner and bring his skills and knowledge to service to the town.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Great. Any other nominations? Seeing none. Okay. All right, going on to M, old business, no old business today, and new business. Item one.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following updated Town Council meeting schedule for 2023.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Did everybody get a chance to look at the updated Town Council schedule for next year?
Guess I gotta make reservations for Valentine's.
There was one change. We switched from Valentine's Day, February 14 to February 7. So hopefully, everybody's out of trouble now. Any other questions or comments on this list? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N2, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract for the replacement of sidewalk ramps to Martin Lee Liverio Contractors of Bristol at the purchase price not to exceed $65,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Item N3, I'd make a motion to award the contract for the purchase of treated road salt for the 2022-2023 winter season to Cargill, Inc., of North Alston, Ohio, at the purchase price of $99.77 per ton.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Kathy, would you like to add anything to this?
Sure. This is our typical salt bid, and we have money budgeted for it. And the reason why it's on the agenda is because it's valued at exceeds $50,000.
Thank you. Out of sight, out of mind. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N4, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of our Hearst Extrication Equipment to Fire Medic Supply Company, Inc., of Rocky Hill, at the purchase price not to exceed $75,000.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Kathy.
You've read the, the note, and this has been recommended by the fire department, and we have money in the budget for the tool.
Any other questions or comments? First meeting, you're getting stuff, Tom. You're good. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N5, make a motion to allocate 108860 of the American Rescue Plan Act federal grant money to the Farmington Valley Health District.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Kathy.
We talked about this at the last meeting, that the Farmington Valley Health District has requested that, that the 10 health district communities consider supporting the health district with a portion of each member's ARPA funding. So this would be our portion. It would be $108,860.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none. I think this is a wise move here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N6, make a motion that Section 55-1 of the Town Code of Ordinances be waived, and that Rampage Skate Shop of Skate Park Equipment of Milford, Connecticut, be awarded a contract to remove the skate park complex at Tungstus Meat Park at a cost not to exceed $100,000. And I'm sorry, it's renovate.
Thank you. Second.
The skate park.
It's expensive for removing it.
Yes.
Kathy.
We're very excited. Nancy Perrin and our staff had set up a subcommittee, and they worked together to come up with a new plan, and they have come up with a new plan for our, to renovate the skate park. And this, we're actually asking here today to waive the bid requirements because this is the group that they've worked with. They're well-known. They've got the plan, and they're willing to start and get ready right away. And so we are recommending that you waive the bid, and then we will start with this group to renovate and replace the skateboard park at Tungstus Meat.
Great. Any questions or comments? I just have one. If we pass this, will you commit to be one of the first skaters there?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N7, make a motion to accept the working definition of antisemitism by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance, IHRA, as attached.
Second. You're not gonna read the whole thing?
I could if you want me to.
Kathy.
At the March 28 meeting, the Human Relations Commission approved a motion to accept the attached and recommended resolution, and they've asked that the council do the same.
And for anyone interested, that will be part of the minutes, so you can take a look at the resolution as it is written. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N8, make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute the attached land access license agreement with the Farmington River Watershed Association and Princeton Hydro Engineering, PC, for purposes of due diligence, site plan development, and permitting associated with the removal of the Griss Mill Dam, aka Winchell Smith Dam.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Kathy.
Farmington River Watershed Association, consultants to them, and the Connecticut DEP Fisheries Division, Ms. Porters and the town are partners on this project. Funding is through the Connecticut DEP Fisheries. The dam must be removed because it has deteriorated to a point that it cannot be repaired or restored. Additionally, the Fisheries Division is focused on removing dams. It's barriers to fish, fish passage. Contractors and consultants will need to enter the town of Farmington property for the purposes of completing due diligence, site plan development, and permitting for the dam removal project. Additionally, Farmington Watershed needs to provide documentation to the Connecticut DEP indicating the town is in agreement with and has no objections. Town staff, Russ is here, I think, in the audience, if you have any questions, and we approve, we have no problem with the DEP or Ms. Porters or the watershed removing the dam.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Actually, I do have.
I do have one. Go ahead, Brian.
And Russ, I just want to ask you, I guess you would know. Does the dam have any historic value that we might want to keep a piece of it at all? Or, I have no idea. I'm just curious.
Yeah, it only dates back to like 1645.
It's older than me.
So I don't know if you'd like to say anything about it.
Okay, yeah. I don't know. I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, no, we'll have, as a review of the prepared files. It's really a timber dam.
Oh.
Okay. I don't know how long the timber is gonna be after 200 years, 300 years.
Unless they're petrified, not too good.
Exactly. So if there's something we're trying to solve.
I was just curious.
Any other questions or comments?
No more dam questions?
Waiting for that. Brian, you missed that one.
Come with that one, too.
Wow. CJ, that's a big one.
I'm holding it back.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Veteran.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
They're gonna start paying me every time they drop one of those now.
Agenda item N9, make a motion to cancel the August 9, 2022 regular Town Council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I think this needs no exclamation. Kathy, you don't want to talk about that, do you?
No.
Good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N10, make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as listed.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Has everybody had a chance to look at the lists? Standard stuff. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Our next item will be moving into executive session, so, oh, sorry.
Sorry, since Russ is here, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Russ, come on.
So close.
You're, you're standing right there. Okay. So there's a lot of construction happening on Colt Highway as you're, you know, by the four-way stop sign, and as you're going into or onto the ramp to get to 84. So a bunch of my neighbors, because I live right around there, were asking what that was about, and I don't know, so I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's a DOT project?
I figured.
They're going to create a, right now, the eastbound lane as the right of way to get onto 84, which is a high accident area. So they're gonna basically make the left lane, the eastbound lane, a stop condition, and the westbound lane will have the right of way.
So as you're coming from West Farms, right, on that road, and you're going on to 84 like that, so you'll be able to take a right turn, and then you'll still be able to go straight, so you'll be able to take a right turn, and then you'll still be able to go straight, or you won't be able to go straight anymore?
You'll still be able to go straight.
Okay.
It's just the left one. Right now, you have to come and stop.
Yes.
And let the eastbound lane clear.
Yes.
They're going to stop, and the westbound direction is going to help.
Okay.
Yes, but that should be done probably October, November.
Oh, wow, that long? Okay. Will they be doing anything to the bridge that's there? No? Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
One quick question.
Brian, wasn't that going to be a roundabout?
No.
Oh, it wasn't?
It was at the intersection, it was two miles. Oh, it's there. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Russ while you got him? Joe's here, too. One question for Joe. Nobody rides for free. Okay, moving on. Our next item will be moving into executive session. Before we do that, I will leave you with our quote for the meeting, quoting F. Scott Fitzgerald. "I had that familiar conviction that life was beginning over again with the summer." With that, I'll ask for a motion.
Agenda item 01, make a motion, executive session, discuss matters concerning sale or acquisition of real property to adjourn the meeting to executive session as permitted by Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-225 Subsection A, for the following purposes, as followed by Section 1-200 Subsection 6. That is, discussion of the selection of a site or lease, sale, or purchase of real estate by a political subdivision of the state when publicly regarded such site, lease, sale, purchase, or construction would cause a likelihood of increased price until such time as all property has been acquired, and all proceeds, proceedings, and transactions concerning the same has been terminated or abandoned. Attendance and exec session shall be limited to members of the council, town manager, director of public works.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second. We will be adjourning to our executive session. For those of you watching at home, thank you for joining us. We will not be coming back after executive session. We will be adjourning the meeting from here. So, thank you.